Good evening. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Tiverton Town Council, Monday, November 25th. We'll start by standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call?
Counselor Perry.
Present.
Counselor Edwards.
Present.
Counselor Clark.
Present.
Counselor Hilton.
Present.
Counselor Cook.
Present.
Counselor DiMediris is absent, and Counselor Driggs is not here at this time.
At this point, we'd like to welcome the Tiverton High School Girls Soccer Team, state champions, who are here tonight for proclamation, and I know there are quite a few of them, but we'd like to ask the girls and their coaches if they might come up to the front area. The Tiverton Town Council, congratulations to Tiverton High School Girls Division III Soccer Team and Coaching Staff. Whereas the Tiverton High School Varsity Girls Soccer Team won the state's championship Division III title, and whereas the team won at the direction of head coach Jim Gouch, assistant coach Grace James, and team captains Jillian Swast, Kaylee Nagel, and Brenda Nobrega; and whereas the Tiverton Girls Varsity Soccer Team allowed only two goals to score all season -- that's pretty impressive -- and whereas the team earned a near-perfect 17-0 and 1 record; and whereas the team varsity roster consisted of six seniors, seven juniors, seven sophomores, and three freshman high school girls; and whereas the team captured their second straight state Division III title championship on Saturday, November 9th, 2019. Be it therefore proclaimed that every official and citizen of the town of Tiverton extends congratulations to the Tiverton High School Girls Varsity Division III Soccer Team and the coaching staff. And I'll just ask if any of the captains can step forward for a moment. These are the proclamations for each of the players, and this is the formal town proclamation for the town council. Congratulations, ladies.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Job well done.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Yeah.
Okay. Onto the consent agenda. Item A, approval of town council minutes, October 28th, 2019, regular meeting. B, acknowledge receipt of minutes from boards, commissions, and committees. There are five sets of minutes from the Historical Preservation Advisory Board, one set from the Arts Council, one set from the Cemetery Commission, and one set from the Planning Board. Item C, acknowledge receipt of reports, Treasurer Denise Sarette, October budget and revenue reports. Item D, acknowledge receipt of correspondence, the Smithfield School Department Resolution to modify Rhode Island general law to permit charging for field trips and advanced placement exams. Item E, approval of tax assess or abatements. Item F, approval of town council 2020 meeting calendar. Item G, Senior Center Director Janet Holmes, distribution of November and December newsletters. H, approval of license renewals, non-advertised, from the period of December 1st, 2019 through November 30th, 2020, including tobacco dealer's license renewals, fixturing license renewals, holiday license renewals, and antique license renewals. Would anyone like to remove anything from the consent agenda?
Madam President, I'd like to recuse myself from Route 177, Flea Market, and Rachel McCardy, Ramco, on the holiday license.
So we should pull that one out, and then we'll just split it up? Okay.
I wanted to pull 4B2 and 4B4.
B2 and B4. Anyone else?
Madam President.
In that case, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve the remainder of the consent agenda, minus B2, B4, and H, holiday license renewals.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, all in favor. B2, Mrs. Cook?
Are you -- do you want to use the mic? Okay. Oh. I just need to ask a question about the Arts Council.
Microphone. Microphone.
Sorry. Number five. We address the next exhibit of the town hall. It was decided to hold a holiday small art show. The show will enable local interested artists to sell works at a price point of $250 or below, an ideal holiday sale venue. I just want to know if that's within the charter to be using the town hall like a store? I'm just, I don't understand. Is anything else being used like that? Anybody else can sell wares in here?
No.
And if I'm not mistaken, you don't mean that as being negative about the art show?
No.
It's just a question of where the town hall or town property can be used for private sales?
It's what?
The short answer is no.
Even the Arts Council?
Yeah. The town hall can't be used for private sales.
Well, what do we do about that? I mean--
This is not, just to clarify, this is not a benefit, correct?
No.
It's a, is this a benefit?
No. I mean, it's not like--
Is it a fundraiser?
Exactly. It's not a fundraiser or a charity. It's a private sale.
It doesn't say that. I read it a couple of times, and I--
Two more.
It's kind of quiet, like--
Yeah. Is there a member, Mrs. Pelletier, from the Arts Council? Do you, can you share a little more information?
Well, if anyone could come up-- We are not actually going to have a sales girl sitting here or anything like that selling these pictures, which shall be put up tomorrow morning. We're going to have it hanging here at maybe more than one cent at 9:30 tomorrow morning. But it was going to offer an opportunity for some of the watercolor artists or somebody else to come in, and in case somebody from the public that comes in to pay their taxes or whatever would see an item, they can then contact the individual and then make private arrangements to buy the painting.
Which, from our understanding, is how the gallery has always operated, that it's not being sold for the town or through the town, but the individual artists who are residents of the town may be approached to have their work purchased.
So it'd be more like an advertisement, you put up a picture with a name or number for them to contact?
Correct.
Well, we've always had them displayed anyhow, and on the private, they have been transactions. I know I have bought stuff, and I don't think it's anything different, so--
Jan?
It will be expanded.
I keep running into people who tell me we've always done it, and unfortunately, there's a problem with it. I just found out a whole bunch today about things that we have done for some period of time that we should not be doing. We cannot have private sales on town property in town hall. I don't think there is a problem with people saying, "Oh, I want to contact the artist" and then do a transaction outside or whatever. I don't think there's a problem with that. You cannot have it here, even if we've always done it.
So can I ask--
Just to correct, I think what I was saying was that we have always let the visitors or the patrons contact the artist. Never was a sale transacted through the gallery.
So my, I guess my question is--
I'm sorry, could we hold on just and go through the chair, because it'll just be easier? Because I would like the solicitor to opine on this, if that's okay.
Having the name and contact number on a piece of art is acceptable. Transacting sales on town property is not.
Okay. So--
That was going to be my question. So a particular artist could have their name and phone number, period.
Let me say something. We're not even as aggressive as that. We just have a list of the painting will have, the picture will have the name of the artist, and then we will have a list at the desk over there where that particular name, title of the artwork, and their telephone number is on, and they can privately contact them and make the arrangements. I don't even know how much they would be selling for.
Okay. So there won't be any pricing material on it? There won't be any prices listed?
No.
And there'll just be a list of names and contacts?
Yes, exactly.
And--
I do believe the artists would probably include a price if, for informational purposes, on their list, but not--
No prices.
Okay, that's fine. And we will instruct them--
And the artists won't necessarily be here--
Correct.
No.
Okay. So--
It's not like a--
It's not like a store.
Shop or anything.
So are we comfortable that, under those guidelines, that this event is okay?
Madam President.
Yes, John?
I have a question for the solicitor, because you'd mentioned that there's no private transactions that should take place here at town hall. Should we not be allowing people to transact real estate? I mean, I've come in here numerous times, and there's a closing going on. That's technically a transaction. I'd like to know what you think about that. It seems to me to fall into the same category.
So the town can't play a role in a sale, right? And we should not be facilitating transactions on town property? If we're listing prices, you're not negotiating a real estate sale here. You're closing a property. The registrar's office is right there. The closing is not the same thing as negotiating and finalizing a sale on town property through the medium of the town, right? So that's the answer.
Thank you, Mrs. Pelletier.
While I'm here, may I remind everyone that we're calling for ornaments for the--
Okay. But I know, but you're on the agenda for that in a few minutes, so we'll have you back in just a couple of minutes.
Wait, I'll get as much as you can.
Madam President?
Yes, John has--
Motion--
--Cook has another--
Well, I figured, are we banging these out now, or, I mean, motion to approve 4B2?
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay. Mrs. Cook?
The other one is planning board.
4B4.
Planning board. I was looking at the planning board, and on page six, discussion of recycling center industrial park site, and I was just trying to figure out what was going wrong with this detail. It says the closed date for Landville closure is the 30th of 2020. I understand that, but the town council is still considering a transfer station versus curbside pickup. That decision was made August 13th, so I'm not, like, a month later, like, this is being brought up at a, I believe they want to be involved, the planning board wants to be involved, in which land is to be used for either a recycling center. I'm pretty sure that's what you were speaking about, Ms. Gil. So I'm just trying to figure out why we're talking about a transfer station.
Jan? Jan?
If I may, I think the minutes reflect that Mr. Rogers said certain things about a decision that was made, and the question is whether that particular decision was made or not. They're somewhat different opinions. My recollection is that at least a preliminary decision was made not to go with a big transfer station. But a lot of it is preliminary, because we're still collecting, or have been collecting information about how big, for example, the recycling center should be, what materials it should accept, which then affects, you know, the decision about a transfer station as well. I think in general, it's fair to say that the decision was made not to head in that direction unless necessary. And I spoke with Mr. Rogers about this as well, because there was a different context. This was his recollection, and I told him that I thought his recollection was not entirely accurate.
Madam President? Yes?
And I would agree with that, listening to the July 29th and then the August 13th town council minutes. It was definitely, and your memo, Jan, clearly stated that the decision was made at this point to go with a curbside pickup and not the transfer because of cost, so I agree with you.
I think you're just talking about minutes of the planning board, and they reflect accurately what Mr. Rogers said. I think there is some question whether what he said was accurate, and, you know, the truth is somewhere in the middle, but I would say that shouldn't stand in the way of approving the minutes.
In that case, do I have a motion?
Madam President, I make a motion to approve 4B4.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor? That brings us to the license renewals that are attached in your packet under the consent agenda, and--
Madam President?
Yes, John?
If I may, I'd like to make a motion to approve all of the holiday licenses, with the exception of--
Well, actually, I think we're going to approve these all at once, so we can make the approval for all of them.
But there's two that have to be pulled because of Counselor Perry has to recuse himself from those, so--
Sorry, I thought there was only one.
No, that's all good.
177 Flea Market and Ramco.
And they're in--
They're under holiday licenses.
Holiday licenses.
Holiday licenses.
Yes.
In that case, could I have a motion to approve all of the license renewals, with the exception of those two?
So moved.
Second. Second.
We're on seven.
There's a motion and a second. Any questions?
We're on H. Yeah, there's--
H, sorry.
Yeah, there's two holiday licenses in there that Counselor Perry has to recuse from.
Can you name those again? I'm sorry.
177 and Ramco?
Route 177 Flea Market and Rachel McCardy, doing business as Ramco.
Yep.
So there's a motion and a second. Any other questions?
For a second. John made the motion, I second.
All in favor? Okay.
This time, I'll recuse myself.
And now Mr. Perry is going to recuse himself.
Madam President?
Yes, John?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the holiday licenses for Route 177 Flea Market and Rachel McCardy, DBA Ramco.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor? Okay. Thank you. All right, now we're on to the open public forum, and we have four people signed up tonight, starting with Mrs. Pelletier and the holiday ornaments. So we'll welcome Barbara back up.
Well, in the spirit of the season, I, we are again asking for ornaments for our tree in town hall. We have kept the ones from last year, so we'll be putting those up, and we will be adding to them, and we will be having a drawing for prizes, as many prizes as I can get. And last year, it went over very well, especially the seniors who submitted. Most of the ornaments were very thrilled with the prizes that they got, because it was a little happiness in the holidays. So hopefully, all of you get your crafting fingers going, and you have about a week to craft an ornament.
Thank you, Mrs. Pelletier. Next is William McGlaughlin, zoning issues and speech-up meetings.
Thank you. I want to start off, Tiverton has one of the worst reputations in Rhode Island. It's business unfriendly. It's a well-deserved reputation due to the actions of certain groups in Tiverton. And currently, you have a new building and zoning officials who have been going out on complaints of a few that have always been the root of our reputation here in town. But now that the zoning enforcement has been going out without an understanding of the zoning rules, regulations, and enforcing it where it doesn't exist in manners in which it doesn't apply, and implying to some of the business owners they've been bothering that their license renewal could be tentative on their compliance, this is just not good. I do understand that the council has recently taken actions to correct some of these problems, but I think there needs to be a board or a panel that should be comprised of local businessmen and women, contractors, attorney, or somebody with legal experience to review our outdated and obscure zoning regulations, and some cases produce new ones, clarify some of the ones that just make no sense. And to hire an attorney for that purpose, he's not likely to understand the needs or concerns of local businesses or homeowners in this town, so you could end up, again, with conflicting zoning regulations applying to the people in this town. So I would like you to consider putting together some sort of a committee or board like that to review them, people who know how to affect the people in this town. My second thing I'd like to bring up is about the issue of speech that came up in the last meeting. Well, the town council is restricted in some speech by Robert's Rules, because they need to stay on task, and any member who can't work within those rules should step down if they don't like them. It's necessary for the purpose of efficiency and in the best interest of the town and the residents. The council also can't restrict public speech without violating the First Amendment, but they can request people who speak, voluntarily follow guidelines, which the council can put up on a sign right here at the speaker's podium. I've given you all a copy of an idea for that sign. It'll help make things more efficient, clear for the public and the council to understand what the speaker's point is, whether it's condemning something you're doing, advice or their opinion on something. At least it'll be clear, concise, and it'll eliminate a lot of the things that go on. As much as I don't like Mr. Rahm, and I don't think much of Mr. Katz, you did violate their rights at the last meeting, and I understand it was probably everybody in the room who Mr. Rahm was getting up to do a long political thing, but nevertheless, it still is a violation of their rights. And I think we can have free speech, and I think if you set guidelines for that here, the people will follow them, including Mr. Rahm and Mr. Katz. And I think that would be in the best interest of everybody having a more efficient and effective interaction with the council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McGlaughlin. Mr. McGlaughlin has left us a suggestion. Maybe we could, at some point, consider that it would be helpful to have something that goes with it sign up.
I just want to add, how about "shut up"? That might be good.
I'm sorry, what?
I'm not sure exactly--
How does that fit into the--
Does the topic could be used in my report? You can hear that.
I'll add "shut up" as something not to tell someone.
I would like to, I would like to respond, however, to one thing that Mr. McGlaughlin said regarding people's First Amendment rights at council hearings and when you can speak. The public is entitled to speak during the public forum or at any item that's marked for public discussion or for public hearing at a council meeting. Not every item on the agenda is marked for public speaking, and at that case, it's not a violation of anybody's First Amendment rights if you don't allow speaking from the public. Many items are, but there are some that are not, and I believe in the circumstances that you are speaking about, those were not items marked for public speaking, for public forum, or as public hearing items. Hang on a second, Mr. McGlaughlin. And there is also an issue of fairness. If you don't mark something for public speaking, if it's not noted on the agenda that the public is going to be allowed to speak, and then you decide, well, we're going to have some people speak, there may be other people who say, you know, "I would have come and spoken if I had the opportunity." So it is sometimes, while it seems a little strict, it's sometimes in the council's best interest of fairness to follow the agenda regarding things that are identified as public speaking items versus items that are not.
Well, that was my point, for items that were invited for public comment, that there be guidelines for the speakers just to make it more efficient.
Thank you.
Madam President?
Yes, John?
Swallow to the clerk. No, I'm going to give my paper to Jeannie, so it can be entered into the record.
Thank you, John. Next on the agenda is Mr. Richard Rahm, item to discuss all items on agenda.
Thank you, Madam President. The first item I would like to address, and I would only like five minutes of time, and if I don't use all of those five minutes of time, I would like to yield back the rest of it, so I can address questions that may come up during the course of the council.
Mr. Rahm, you do know that our policy that we adopted is a three-minute per speaker?
Oh, perfect. Three minutes is all I need.
Thank you very much.
Great. I have a beautiful shotgun with inlay and carving in it. It's a work of art. Can, under two, under four, B2, can I bring a picture of that shotgun in, because it's art, and put it up with my contact information?
I think, are you asking about the Arts Council's--
The decision to allow art to be displayed in the town council. And I have the shotgun. It's art. It's not worth as much as I can get for it, because it's a shotgun. It's worth a lot more, because it's got a picture of a bear, and it's all carved into it. It's beautiful.
I think that we're going to have to potentially ask the solicitor on this.
I'm not sure what the criteria were for jurying or other hanging requirements. I don't know if anybody is familiar with those requirements. I don't see why that wouldn't be permitted, so long as the proper procedure to qualify the project within the scope-- the project within the scope of whatever rules were set out initially are followed.
Jan?
I'm going to have to disagree with that. I think the Arts Council has a relationship to the town. It does certain activities. It organizes shows and everything else. I honestly don't know that this particular public comment period needs to be used to come up with all kinds of wild hypotheticals that then the council somehow is made to feel it needs to address. It's just not worth it. Let's just get on with business.
I agree. I don't think any of this art should be displayed, including a shotgun or a picture. None. Because it's too hard to define. Well, what's art? Thank you for your patience.
And finally, we have Kathy Clarendon regarding the appointment of Chris Ryan to the library board.
Thank you. I'm the chair of the Tiverton Library Board of Trustees. I and the vice chair, Carol Harmon, interviewed Ms. Ryan. We would wholeheartedly support her candidacy to our board. I sent in a letter. I hope everyone had a chance to read it. I'm not going to be able to be here for her interview a little bit later, but I just wanted to say publicly how much we would like to have her. Thank you.
Thank you. Public presentations, and now, public hearings. We're going to hear from Stu Gilfillan, who's the chair of the Town Farm Renovation Committee for a public hearing for town council approval on their application for an RIDEM recreation grant for the Town Farm Playground. Stu?
Thank you. So, a couple of notes before I begin. There are two documents you have that are related to me being up here. One says DEM on the front of it. Mine is a color version. Yours is not. The second one is one that I have added, actually, to your pile tonight. It's just some backup information. It doesn't pertain to the grant directly, but it gives a quick snapshot of where the surveys are so far, some interesting data we pulled out. That one is in color. When you first sat up here, on the bottom of your piles were those two pieces in particular. So, I do want to also extend just a brief apology. I realize it was not in your initial packet. It went out at 1:50 to all the town councilors, as well as to the administrator and the town clerk on Saturday. The town clerk very kindly reached out and nudged me to include it, but there were a few things that we wanted to make sure that we had aligned properly, so you weren't getting various versions in there. So, this is all coming together pretty quickly for us, and as a result, we wanted to make sure we got the best and polished version of it in front of you. So, also, I want to thank Rick Rogers from the DPW and the town administrator for your help in letting me pester you with questions as we worked through this. There was a lot of moving parts. And also, at our last town restoration, a restoration, town renovation committee meeting, thank you to Councilor Cook and Councilor Perry for attending and giving some feedback to us. So, with that said, what you have in front of you is the grant that we are intending to submit to the DEM. It is due on December 11th. Within it, there's some basic information, and I'm happy to give just sort of an overview of what we are asking from them. The grant from the DEM can be up to $400,000 with a 20% match for a large recreational project, and we are asking for $375,000. Now, the rationale behind why we're asking for this and not for the full $400,000 is, for one, as a general rule, I try not to ask for the full amount on any grant. I'm going to move over here so people can see me. I try not to ask for the full amount on any grant. My experiences have not been positive when you go down that road. I think it also shows that there's a willingness on our part fundamentally to contribute through this. There is a budget sheet that you may have in front of you that's an Excel doc. That is not part of the grant. That was just for sort of a review. To give a quick rundown, the in-kind that we are asking for is 375...excuse me. The grant is 375,000 in-kind from the DPW, and this was based on conversations with Director Rogers, is 25,000. In-kind for local support is 20,000 appropriations. So, what we have currently listed in our budget is 50,000. Fundraising is shade over 60,000, and then grants are about 15,000. I will tell you that those grants, that number was reached based on just a quick review of what's out there, as well as discussions with the Arts Council on some funding that they're aware of. I will tell you, I have zero question in my mind that we're going to be able to raise the match in these different categories. None. I think the support and the outpouring from people that have already expressed an interest or a willingness to support this project without us even beginning the process is remarkable. So, I am not worried in any way, shape, or form that we're going to be able to come up with the additional funds to support this, which gets to the question of what are we supporting as part of this application? It is a three-part grant application. The first one, which is what initially started this project, is the replacement of the playground at Town Farm with two age-appropriate sections, one for children ages two to five, and another section for ages five to 12. Those are numbers that are sort of industry-standard numbers. There is one younger category, which is your zero to two. But I will tell you that, having spoken to Andrew Wade from Jamestown, who's also the head of the review committee for the DEM grant, I said, "You really don't need to worry about that one," and Jamestown hadn't eitherd. Within that playground section, we've looked at a couple of different features that we want to make sure we include. There will be a significant amount of accessible equipment for those. Handicap accessible is the term that they appreciate to us putting in here. Sensory equipment. We've already talked to the Arts Council about how do we work with them on developing a plan to put together the right material in there. I think a lot of the feedback we received is that people want that included, and we totally understand. And we really want to make sure that this playground is something that is accessible to children of all different backgrounds and abilities. As part of that, also, the surfacing area, it is likely that the surface will be poured-in-place rubber underneath the majority of resources, with it's an eco-fiber material. I'm not getting the exact right word, but that will fit in between. And one of the features of that is it doesn't compact incredibly. It doesn't give a lot of distance, like normal mulch does, if anybody's using a reference. It's pretty firm, so it's actually designed for increased mobility. So, we thought about everything from the base surfacing all the way through the equipment itself. That's piece number one. The second piece is an outdoor fitness park that we will put over next to the tennis courts, where the existing components of the playground are, the sort of individual elements. And what you'll find in your packet is actually not reflective of the equipment that we're putting there. Please keep in mind that any of the images you find are purely conceptual. Nothing has been defined yet. We, again, in referring to, or deferring to feedback from the folks in Jamestown, they had said, "Put something together so folks have an idea, and you can include it." And in the presentation that I gave, I think it was last week, this is what I had showed as well. The idea behind the outdoor fitness space is it could be used by numerous stakeholders. So, you could have it from senior citizens to parents that are coming with their children and want to get a workout while they're having games occur, to people that want to come and just work out after work. The benefit to this location is because of the way the lights are situated, we can actually have extended hours for workouts. So, and then, the third piece, which is going to be sort of weird to hear, is pickleball. So, within the tennis courts, looking to take two of those tennis courts and turn them into eight pickleball courts. Just to give some perspective on what pickleball is, because I had no reference for this until I began looking at this project, and now I have no brain space left, is that pickleball is one of the fastest-growing sports in the country. Their national organization's membership grew 650% last year. So, there's some pretty big numbers out there for people that are playing pickleball. As part of the feedback we received, we also got a number of comments about people not liking the tennis courts and saying they needed to be repaired. Because we'll have to seal coat the entire location, we'll actually have better tennis courts when we come out of this, although it's not specifically called out in this grant. So, the benefit of pickleball in this, not only is that there's a large interest in it from a community standpoint, and I mean that as the Rhode Island community, but it's also something, and having spoken to the people from USA Pickleball, the U.S. Pickleball Association, who are writing a letter of support for us, that there's the opportunities for us to hold tournaments, to bring in revenue as a result of that. So, it seems like a weird fit, but I promise you that it is in there for a reason, and it will have a positive impact on the town. It was also something that Andrew Wade mentioned.
Stu, while you're on the pickleball, could you just briefly explain what pickleball is?
I will do my best. So, in the, if you have this one in front of you, see, it's got the colors to it, sort of towards the back, I believe it's the last page. It actually shows, it's, as best as I can explain it, if you took a tennis court and split it into quarters, and then you have, again, it looks a lot like a tennis court, and I believe they use a wooden mallet. It's tennis at like quarter speed. So, just to paint a picture on this, I'm not what you'd call super athletic, and I feel like, from everything that it was explained to me, that pickleball would be something that I could get engaged with. It would be a sport that I could be involved with, that you can play with your kids, that people from different backgrounds, you could do it if you're in a wheelchair. I see Jan waving over there. We can get you on a court, so...
I have a confidence of interest.
Oh, just because of my physique? Yeah, thank you. But the moral of the story being here is that I was really unfamiliar about this particular sport when I started. What I'm found from it, and you'll see this in our theme across the board, is it is a sport that is inclusive. It provides opportunities for people of all different backgrounds to participate. And if you look at places where there are participants in the state, there are lots of organizations participating. There are very few permanent courts. Newport is one of the few places that we noticed there were courts, and even the folks in Jamestown, and I don't mean to keep coming back to them, but there is a reason for that, had stated that they're having problems setting up these tournaments. And so, it's something that resonated with us, and as I dove in further, I found that the numbers backed up and warranted its inclusion here. So, you have three elements within this grant. Yep. Counselor Jamesy.
Yeah. Is it like paddleball?
I think a little bit bigger. I can honestly say that I have not seen a paddle for paddleball or pickleball when I looked at it online. The other part to this is there's all sorts of grants to get the equipment to do it. So, I had probably a 45-minute conversation with the folks from the National Association. In addition to representing us by providing a letter, they're willing to work with us on grants for this type of equipment.
And how many people could be on a court at a given time?
I believe it's, you can put four on any given granted time. Normally, it's like two on two. So, we're increasing the number of people that are using that footprint.
Madam President, I was just informed that our assistant, Madam Clerk, plays pickleball, so she could probably answer some of those questions.
Jeannie, are you a pickleball player?
I...
Help me out here.
I joined in a pickleball game. Yes, I did, this summer. My daughter's husband's parents play pickleball in Michigan, so they invited me to play pickleball with them. It's sort of like cross between, I guess, table tennis and regular tennis. It's kind of like mini tennis. And I think it's, I was surprised at how much I enjoyed it, and it was something that these seniors were really good at it, too.
Do you use a paddle? What do you use?
You use. It's like a...
Tennis racket? Paddle?
It's like a wooden racket, yeah. But you don't have to run and chase the ball as much, but it's pretty competitive.
It was actually something, somebody actually called out in our survey as well, on the fitness park side of the survey, because we did two of them, and the pickleball was one item they called out. And I also just wanted to offer one comment that was in here that I thought was really poignant. Where was it? Here. It was to the effect of, this is what they said. "This is great. My husband and I are new to town and just had a baby, hoping to stay in Tiverton for a while." So, the way that we have designed this is not only meant to be inclusive, it's meant to draw in the community and the surrounding communities in a way that makes this really an even bigger epicenter than we've already had for recreation.
And then, Madam President, one other question. On the fundraising front, how are you proposing you're going about the fundraising for the contributions?
Sure. So, there's a couple of different avenues in here. Grants will be one component of that. I will tell you, there are people that are willing to make private contributions as a portion of that. I think, you know, we could go out probably tomorrow and have 20,000. I'm not even exaggerating.
Are they taxed? I don't know what the ramifications are.
It's all going through the town, so any contributions, that's already set up with the treasurer. But I think the other component to this is that, if you look at what other playgrounds have done, they've done fundraising activities from, you could sponsor individual elements of the playground, to things like the ancillary components, sunshades, trashcans, you know, there are places you can get name recognition. And we've also looked at doing stuff like a brick walkway area where people could do pavers. Other projects have been undertaken in town similar to that as well.
I can answer the question about the tax deductible, because we did this with the beach. If the money is earmarked for a specific municipal purpose that the community will benefit from, and is held by the treasurer, that donations that are earmarked specifically for those purposes are generally considered tax deductible under IRS code.
Thank you.
And you will need to send them letters of acknowledgement, so they'll have that as a receipt.
And this grant has to be in by December, you said?
December 11th at 3:00 PM.
Okay, so what has to happen between now and December 11th?
Sure. So, the grant you're seeing in front of you is pretty much what we're planning to submit pending any review or major changes, correct? Yep. So, I need a sign-off from the town council approval to proceed. At that point, from a commission or committee standpoint, the only elements that aren't included in this are letters of support from the various entities that we've reached out to, some in town, some externally, i.e. the pickleball association, to strengthen our case. And then, we put it together and submit the application.
Since this is a public hearing, I think we'll open this up to public comments, and then if the council has additional questions. But, Stu, I wouldn't go too far, because I think you may have some. So, do we have any members of the public who'd like to speak on this application?
Barbara Martin, Neck Road. I am awed by the amount of work that Stu has put in this whole process. It sounds like a fabulous idea. I drive past Town Farm Recreation Area every day. There are people there pretty much every day, sometimes early in the morning, sometimes in the evening. The fact that this wonderful resource that we have could be used even more by all ages, by people who have handicaps and, I don't know, what are some of the other things? But it just sounds like a wonderful thing that we should pursue.
Sally Black, Broadview Drive. So, as I was reading the paper, I saw restrictions placed on the land in the playground. The Bayview Playground has restrictions. You can't dig below two feet without state permission and everything, so we might lose a little bit of that site. And as soon as I heard about this, I called Stu, because I'm the chair of Health and Wellness. Every district has to have health and wellness, and I'm on Tiverton Prevention. And as far as Tiverton Prevention goes, this is called a protective factor. Whenever you can have kids safe and supervised, it's a positive thing. And also, the adult portion of it is amazing, because I spent a lot of time at Town Farm, a lot of games. And when I was there, the slides were too high, the swings were too big. It was totally inappropriate. You wouldn't want your kids on it. There was no fancy, because they're not on the main road. This is really exciting. I'm really happy about it. But the Tiverton Prevention, at their meeting, they had a consensus to support this, and so did the Health and Wellness. And the one thing we find in all our studies as far as Tiverton goes is a place to gather. You know, people need a place just to be together. And so, you've got to think, it's the parents and grandparents, just to get out of the house, get up and get dressed, go out in the fresh air with your grandchild or your child, and sit there and talk about what's going on in town, because isolation, confinement, and fatigue are the three worst things that get to the people as we get older. So, this is a very, very exciting thing, and we have our total support. Thank you.
Peter Bermonte from the Arts Council. I was just going to read into the record a statement of support that we'll be submitting with the grant application that Stu asked me to put together. So, this will be addressed to the Grant Committee Review members, as well as to members of the town council. The Tiverton Arts Council is pleased to provide this letter of support to the Tiverton Recreation Commission's application for a large recreational development projects grant for the DEM's fall 2019 roster. Pardon me. The Arts Council is a town committee that was formed in 2000 as mandated in the town charter, and works to strengthen Tiverton's community vitality through the arts, thus enhancing residents' quality of life and contributing to the economic development and appeal of the town. Creativity and play are desirable and necessary elements for any innovative and thriving community. Aside from being an engine of job creation and economic growth, arts, culture, and recreation and their assets contribute to the social well-being and are essential to creating a more livable, safe, memorable, and connected community. The Arts Council is working to collaborate with the Recreational Commission on its imagined redesign of the playground and other amenities at Tiverton Town Farm. The project fulfills... The project fulfills a much overdue upgrade to the playground and landscape features at Town Farm, and will be a significant boost to the town's recreational facilities, as well as a new space for the integration of public art and performing arts programming for the benefit of town residents and visitors near and far. The Arts Council is excited to be able to work with the Recreation Commission towards this and other significant projects that will bring more value and activity to the town. Leveraging each other's groups' skills and expertise will go far to create economies of scale, allowing for greater impact and enjoyment for the residents of Tiverton. Tiverton is rich in agricultural, creative, cultural, natural, and historic resources. The envisioned Town Farm project will be much, will do much, rather, to further elevate the town's unique assets, and aligns significantly with Tiverton's comprehensive plan. The Arts Council enthusiastically endorses this project, and hopes that you will as well. Submitted by the Arts Council. Thank you.
Any other members of the public? Any other members of the public? One more time, any other members of the public? Okay, in that case, we'll close the public hearing, and now we'll go to council discussion, or questions for Stu.
Madam President. Sorry. Counselor Cook.
Madam President, I'd just like to commend Stu and his committee for doing a fabulous job on this in a timely manner. They put a lot of hard work into this.
I do need to stress that the committee is the aspect here. I mean, there are some incredible people in this town that have stepped up and given a lot of their time, so, you know, I'm the one standing in front of you. The heavy lift was done by a number of people, so, but thank you.
Madam President?
Yes, John.
If it would please the council, I'd like to make a motion to approve the request for the Rhode Island DEM Recreation Grant for the Town Farm Playground, and ask the Town Council President, or Administrator, or whatever needed party to go ahead and issue a letter of support as well.
Second.
There's a motion, a second, any other comments or discussion or questions?
I just have one quick question, because I can't remember. I notice each, each paragraph is assigned number of points. And what was the total number of points you had to get up to?
They don't actually define what their number is. I think based on what the applications that come in, they look at them and then rank it from there. We did go through and do a sort of a self-analysis on places. Some of them we're going to be higher on, other ones, you know, climate change may be a little bit tougher in that category.
Okay. So they gave you a range, like one to five, or one to eight?
For each of the questions.
I see, okay, thank you.
I would just like to echo Joe's comments. This is a very big grant application to write with an extraordinary amount of backup material that's required. And a lot of this took a lot of research and a lot of time, and I know that Stu and his committee, and I think, I don't know if there are, I know I see at least one other committee member in the back of the room, Adam Reposa. Is there anybody else in your?
Jen and Adam are both here.
Oh, there they, sorry. Again, to express our appreciation and say how enthusiastic we are about this project, and what a wonderful job you've done, we'll keep our fingers crossed that we get the grant, and the vision that you've created will be something that we'll be able to see in the not-too-distant future. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Do you need to vote?
I have a motion in a second, all in favor. Okay. Off you go.
Thank you very much.
The Town Council is sitting as a Board of Licensing. I think we can do these in blocks, if that's okay. So, these are advertised public hearings for license renewals from the time period of December 1st, 2019, through November 30th, 2020. We'll start with A, the Junkyard and Secondhand Dealer License Renewals. First, Arnold's Auto Parts at 1484 Crandall Road, General Auto Recycling at 384 King Road, the Gossi Salvage Yard, 20 Cory's Lane, Sanford and Son LTD., 104 Cynthia Avenue, Tiverton Auto Parts, 541 Bogomarsch, South Shore Tiverton LLC, Secanet Recycling, 413 Bogomarsch. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak on any of these renewals? Going once, going twice, third time? Okay. In that case?
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to approve items A-1 through 6 for the renewals for the Junkyard and Secondhand Dealer Licenses from December 1st, 2019 to November 30th, 2020.
There's a motion, a second?
Second.
There's a motion in a second, any questions or discussion amongst the council?
Madam President, one more. Do we need to do anything with the, meet all legal requirements like we didn't have done in the past? Are we good in here? Beautiful.
But we can certainly amend the motion to say subject to meeting all legal requirements.
I don't think we need to.
Okay, there's a motion in a second, all in favor? Okay. Onto liquor license renewals, again, the same time period. Starting with Class A liquor stores. Number one, Chan's Me, I think I'm saying that the right way, does businesses, Tiverton Liquors at 65 Main Road, Nimraj, which does businesses, Crossroad Liquors at 1540 Bogomarsch Road, and Smitten, which does businesses, Stonebridge Liquors at 2490 Main Road. Class BV, which are full liquor licenses, the Black Goose Company, the Black Goose Cafe, 2160 Main Road, Evelyn's Nano Quokka Drive-In at 2335 Main Road, Foodworth, DBA Atlantic Sports Bar and Restaurant, 70 Shove Street, Eugene, DBA Little Bear Sports Lounge, 983 Main Road, Moulin Rouge, Inc., 1403 Main Road, Michael Napolitano, DBA McCray's Seafood at 115 Stafford Road, the Newport Harbor Corporation, DBA The Boathouse Restaurant, LLC. at 227 Schooner Drive, Riptide Sports Grill Incorporated at 1 Bay Street, the Secanet River Grill at 54, I'm sorry, 524 Main Road, Silver Brothers, DBA Barcellos Family Restaurant, 1214 Stafford Road, Spring Restaurant at 118120 Main Road, Susan's Restaurant at 13 Crandall Road, Tro, T-R-O-A-D-R, DBA The Red Dory at 1848 Main Road. Class BVL, limited liquor license, Classic Pizza at 495 Main Road, Jaxi's Galaxy, Tiverton, at 777 Tiverton Casino Boulevard, Sewell Seabury Associates does businesses, The Four Corners Grill at 3841 Main Road. Class BT, Bed and Tavern, the Senior Lifestyle, Secanet Bay, does businesses, Brookdale, Secanet Bay, at 1215 Main Road. Class D Unlimited, Club Licenses, Father Joseph Bear, Columbian Center, DBA The Knights of Columbus, 28 Fish Road, Woodrow L. Sylvia Post Home Association, Incorporated, 134 Shove Street, Bayview Holy Ghost Citizens Club, 66 Bottom Street. Class BC, which is a casino license, Twin River, Tiverton LLC. does business as the Tiverton Casino Hotel at 777 Tiverton Casino Boulevard. Since this is a public hearing, would any members of the public like to speak on any of these license renewals? Once? Second call? Third? In that case?
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to approve all of the liquor licenses for a period, by the way, on the agenda, it's marked that you're behind, from December 1st, 2019, to November 30th, 2020.
Madam President. With respect to McCray's Seafood, the license renewals indicate that the certificate of good standing remains outstanding. With respect to that one, might I suggest that the council grant, but not, but have the Town Clerk withhold issuance of the license, subject to filing of the certificate of good standing, in accordance with Rhode Island general laws 3-7-24.
I'd like to amend my motion to include the language from the solicitor.
Second.
There's a motion in a second, any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Item C, indoor shooting range renewals, Randy LeBeau, DBA Secanet River Outfitters, at 777 Main Road, and the Tiverton Rod and Gun Club, at 1529 Fish Road. Any comments from members of the public? Going once, twice, third call?
Madam President?
Yes, John.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the indoor shooting range renewals licenses for the same period, December 1st, 2019, to November 30th, 2020.
Second.
There's a motion in a second, any other questions or discussion?
One point of discussion, Madam President.
Yes, John.
I'd just like to make mention that I believe that the town holds some liability in issuing these licenses that is outstanding relative to every other municipality in the country. And this is an ordinance I think we should revisit at some point in the near future and remove the town from issuing these licenses, because quite frankly, are the people responsible for doing the inspections and getting involved in these things, are not qualified to do so, as was mentioned when this ordinance was originally passed.
There's a motion in a second? All in favor?
Madam President, I'll just clarify for Counselor Cook. My point is, I don't think we should be issuing licenses, because no other municipality in the country issues an indoor shooting range license.
I think, Mrs. Cook, I think we have an ordinance that requires us to license indoor shooting ranges. Other municipalities do not. I think Counselor Edwards would like to be on the record stating that he does not believe that we should have that, although we do. So for the purposes of tonight, and assuming these folks want to operate, I think we should proceed with our vote. There's a motion in a second, yes? All in favor? Okay.
I just wanted to make a general comment on these licenses, where you have a spreadsheet that indicates what has been inspected and what departments, and that's what I consider what you call meeting legal requirements. And you're going to see in a few of them, INS, it means the insurance. It does not mean that I don't have an insurance bind, Your Honor. But there are some insurance companies that have given some of these businesses a hard time in getting the town named on them. So the solicitor has, is checking into it, and has checked into some of this. So I just want you to know that I'm not going to hold up those licenses or not allow them to open for it. Do you want to explain what you've figured out on that?
So I did look at the general law of requirements. Generally, liquor is excluded from commercial insurance. So, a number of municipalities have, well, state law requires now that holders of liquor licenses carry specific liquor insurance. But a number of municipalities, Tiverton included, have required that for issuance of certain liquor licenses, that the town be listed as an additional insured. That's where we're getting some pushback from, a number of these insurance carriers. Technically, under our ordinance, it's only holders of Category F and F1 licenses that are required to list the town as an additional insured. And there was a recent case law out of the Rhode Island Supreme Court that places some significant limits on the ability of additional insureds to exercise privileges under those insurance policies anyway. So that's an issue that the town should look at going forward, but at the moment, I would simply suggest that the town authorize, the ordinance only applies to Category F and F1 licenses, so I'd suggest that with the exception of any of those particular licenses, the council, you know, feel comfortable reauthorizing the licenses.
Onto non-advertised public hearings for license renewals, again, December 1st, 2019 to November 30th, 2020. The first approvals are entertainment license renewals, Atlantic Sports Bar and Restaurant, 70 Shove Street, Bayview Holy Ghost Citizens Club, 66 Bottom Street, the Father Joseph Bear, Knights of Columbus, 28 Fish Road, Eugene, Little Bear Sports Lounge, 983 Main Road, Riptide Sports Grill, Riptide, 1 Bay Street, Sandy Woods Farm at 43 Muse Way, Senior Lifestyle, Brookdale Secanet Bay, 1215 Main Road, Susan's Restaurant at 13 Crandall Road, Silver Brothers, Barcellos Family Restaurant, 1214 Stafford Road, the Spring Restaurant at 118 Main Road, the VFW Woodrow L. Wilson, I'm sorry, Wilson, Woodrow L. Sylvia, 134 Shove Street, Tiverton LLC., DBA Tiverton Casino Hotel at 777 Tiverton Casino Boulevard. Public hearings, any members of the public? Once, twice, third time? Okay.
Madam President?
I'm sorry, go ahead, Joe.
Number eight, should that be Wally's Top House and not Susan's Restaurant?
It's listed as they apply, he may be doing businesses that, but.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Wally's Top House is, in fact, Susan's Restaurant, LLC.
Okay, thank you.
Madam President?
Yes, John.
Motion to approve the entertainment licenses of the aforementioned for a period December 1st, 2019 to November 30th, 2020.
Second?
Second.
There's a motion in a second, any other questions? All in favor? Okay. Mobile home park license renewals, Dadson Mobile Home Owners Association, DBA Dadson Mobile Estates, 301 Bogomarsch Road, Four Seasons Mobile Home Cooperative Association, 225 Brayton Road, Heritage Home Park Cooperative, Inc., 100 Heritage Park, Patchett Brook Park, Inc., 4502 Main Road. Anyone from the public like to comment? Any comments from the public? Third ask? Okay.
Madam President?
Yes, John.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the aforementioned mobile home park licenses for a period December 1st, 2019 to November 30th, 2020.
Second.
There's a motion in a second, any questions? All in favor? Manufactured Home Elderly Community License Renewal, Country View Estates, with an attached planning board recommendation. Are there any members of the public who would like to comment? Any members of the public? Anybody? Okay. In that case?
Madam President?
Yes, John.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the Country View Estates license for a period December 1st, 2019 to November 30th, 2020.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion in a second, no questions, all in favor? Okay. Petroleum Storage License Renewals, Andrew E. Snyder, 605 Neck Road, Dennis Mata, DBA Danny Service Station, 99 Crandall Road, Santa Energy, DBA Inland Fuel Terminals, 25 State Street, SGA, Inc., DBA George's Gas and Service Station, 1215 Stafford Road, JMac Corp., DBA Three Ducks Gas and Car Wash, 400 Main Road, Tiverton Public Works at 50 Industrial Way, Phil's Propane, 477 Crandall Road, SK Properties, King Fisher Housing Association, 40 Alicia Circle, the Tiverton Marina, DBA Standish Boatyard at 1697 Main Road, Feral Gas, Inc., 896 Fish Road, Speedway, LLC., DBA Speedway, 1308 Stafford Road, Executive Smokehouse, LLC., 861 Main Road, Tiverton Sun, 497 Main Road, and the Tiverton Casino Hotel at 777 Casino Boulevard. Any members of the public wishing to comment? Once, twice? I have to ask. I mean, I know that you're wondering, but, but I have to ask, three times apparently. Okay.
Madam President?
John?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the aforementioned petroleum storage licenses for December 1st, 2019 to November 30th, 2020.
Second.
There's a motion in a second, no other questions? All in favor? We're getting to the end here. Fireworks License Renewals, East Lake Variety, 750 East Lake Road, Elaine's Country Store at 1604 Fish Road, Euro Gifts LLC., Firework Connection, 34 Main Road, Nimraj, Crossroads Liquors, 1540 Bogomarsch Road, Ramco at 1560 Bogomarsch Road, Step-by-Step Convenience at 429 Main Road, and Tiverton Convenience Point, Inc., at 29 Stafford Road. And Joe?
Madam President, I recuse myself from Ramco, 1560 Bogomarsch Road.
Okay. Thank you. Any comments, members of the public? Once, twice, third call? Okay. In that case, do I have a motion for everything excepting Ramco?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Questions? Nope. All in favor?
Madam President?
Yes, John.
I'd like to follow that up with a motion to approve the fireworks license for Ramco, 1560 Bogomarsch Road, for December 1st, 2019 through November 30th, 2020.
Second.
All in favor? Flea Market License Renewal, Route 177 Flea Market, 1560 Bogomarsch Road. I know you're recused. Anybody from the public? Once, twice, third call? Okay.
Madam President?
Yes, John.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the Flea Market License for Route 177 Flea Market for December 1st, 2019 to November 30th, 2020.
Mr. Clark?
Second.
All right, any comments or questions? All in favor? Okay. Last one. Quarry License Renewal, Charles Quelo, CMC, FLP, seventeen sixty-four Crandall Road, with a planning board recommendation. Any members of the public? Second call? Last chance for the evening on licenses if you want to say something. This is the last one. Okay.
Madam President.
Yes, John.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the quarry license renewal for a period of November first, two thousand and nineteen to through, I'm sorry, December first, two thousand and nineteen through November thirtieth, two thousand and twenty.
There's a motion in a second?
Second.
There we are, now I have a second, all in favor? Okay. Onto appointments and resignations. We have two applicants for the Harbor Commission. So we'll be interviewing tonight. We'll start with Phyllis Ibbotson, is Phyllis here? Come on up, please. And you're welcome to have a seat if that's more comfortable. And if you could just tell us a little bit about your interest in the Harbor Commission?
Sure. I just finished my Commodore ship at the Tiverton Yacht Club. And so I was looking for something to do for the town. And being from the yacht club and being a boater myself and sailing, that I just thought that was a natural fit for me. I'm also a realtor, which I get a lot of questions on what can people put a dock here? Where's the mooring field, et cetera? So I think in that way, that's going to help me disseminate appropriate information to Tiverton residents. And that's pretty much about it. I mean, I kind of looked over all the different councils and commissions that the town had. And it just seemed, it was very intriguing for me, you know, dealing with DM and CRM-C, which I have in the past.
Anyone on the council have a question for Ms. Ibbotson?
Madam President.
Yes, John.
I just want to comment that you have an impressive resume and I think you'd be a great fit.
Have you attended any of the Harbor Commission meetings?
I actually did, going over the main documents. So I went and last Saturday they had it actually at the Tiverton Yacht Club. And we were there about four or five hours, so it was a nice long meeting.
Well, that's excellent, John. That's my regular question too, John. So anybody else? Well, in that case, thank you for coming to interview tonight. Just so you know and the other applicant knows, our policy is when we have more applicants than slots, we will interview everybody at one meeting and then ideally make our decision and vote at the following meeting.
Okay.
So thank you very much for coming and thank you for applying.
Thank you.
And then we have Andrew Sumberg. Is Andrew here?
He's unable to make tonight's meeting.
He's unable. Is he able to make a future meeting?
Yes, he was unable to make tonight. He's having to.
Okay, well, we'll try and get Mr. Sumberg in then as soon as we can. The Personnel Board, which is a five-member board, we have one vacancy, we have one applicant, Alfred Almeida. Alfred, are you here? Thank you. Alfred, if you could just tell us a little bit about your interest in the Personnel Board?
Good evening, everyone. Alfred Almeida, four thirty-four Bulgar Marsh Road. I've been a resident of town since nineteen eighty-seven. Professionally, I own and operate Procassett Freedom Home on Main Road. I served previously on the Personnel Board for seven years. Took a break, a health issue to deal with. And I was asked by Mr. Kamara, since there were vacancies, if I would reapply. So here I am. I'm also a current member of the Procassett Hills Cemetery Board, serving as Vice President. So I'm pretty familiar with the Personnel Board. We've been through almost every position available that has come before us. Familiar with the policies. And I'm ready to go back on if you so desire.
Well, we're not going to be able to ask you if you've been to a meeting. Obviously, you've been to many of them. But we'll see if, does anyone else on the council have any questions or comments or anything for Mr. Almeida?
Madam President.
Yes, John.
I'd like to make a motion to waive our policy with regards to appointments and be able to appoint this evening.
Second.
Okay, just so everybody understands, if there's only one applicant, we sometimes will waive our policy. And so Counselor Edwards has made that motion and there's a second, all in favor to waive the policy?
We don't want to let him go.
Yeah, we're going to lock him down. Madam President, with that, I'd also like to make a motion to appoint Alfred Almeida to the Personnel Board to fill the vacancy, which is to expire ten fifteen, two thousand and twenty-three.
Second.
Just a motion in a second, all in favor? Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Welcome back to the Personnel Board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go get him, Freddie. This next one's a little questionable.
The Library Board of Trustees, which is a seven-member board, there are two vacancies. We have one applicant right now, Christine E. Ryan. Ms. Ryan.
Hello. Okay, well, I would like to be on the Library Board of Trustees. I like it on, rather than be where you people are, which I was, I would like to be at another place. I, oh, I forgot, I'm on Driftwood Drive in Tiverton. I forgot to say that. So I'm very, I'm a big advocate of libraries. I've loved them since I was a little kid. I think that the library is a really important source for the community and I like to support it as I'm able to. Yes, I've been to a meeting there. Yes, I've talked to the director and the secretary, I think. And I spent time with them and I also looked at the bylaws and what their plans are for the future. And I think I've got experience, I've got experience on the town council. So I know, I know the challenges in the town. I know the business is about the budget and all that. I know how you have to balance different things. So, okay, I'm ready to do it if you will have me. I'd like to, I'd like to be a member of the board.
Madam. Kind of questionable there, I don't know.
Yes, Mr. Perry?
Madam President.
Yes, John.
I'd like to make a motion to waive our policy and conduct the appointment this evening.
Second.
There's a motion in a second to waive the policy, all in favor?
Madam President.
Yes, John.
Like to follow that up by making a motion to appoint former counselor Christine Ryan to the Library Board of Trustees for a term to expire ten fifteen, two thousand and twenty-two. And thank you for volunteering.
Second.
There's a motion in a second. I'd just like to say, having worked with Ms. Ryan on the council, that she's going to be a great addition to the Library Board. And I'm really happy to see her come back off the bench and back into town volunteering.
She was bored, she misses us.
No, no, no.
She's been walking too much by my house.
There's a motion in a second, all in favor? Congratulations.
Okay, thank you very much, thank you.
Bids and Proposals, Town Administrator Reitzma Award of Contract for New Citizen Senior Bus to Transportation Equipment Sales Corporation, AKA Tesco of Oregon, Ohio, in the amount of fifty-eight thousand, four hundred and eighty-nine dollars.
Madam President.
Yes, John.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the award for the senior center's bus.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second. Now Mr. Reitzma can.
Answer all the questions.
I think in the interest of time, I'll try to keep it very, very brief. Just for those in the room who don't know what this is about, we finally are about to get a new senior citizen bus thanks to the efforts of the senior center director as well as the chief of police. As you might remember, we were able to do this because we were applying for a grant from the United States Department of Agriculture that would pay for the cruisers. And we're leveraging that to also be able to acquire the senior citizen's bus essentially at no additional cost because we're paying a match for the cruisers. And by the way, I can't skip over this because the chief just took possession of through the three new cruisers and there will be a ceremony, I believe, on December twelfth. You will hear more about that. But this is to go forward with the bids for the bus. There were four bids. This was not the lowest bid. It was the second lowest bid. The lowest bid had a delivery time of ninety days, so it's not available. And given that, the current bus is simply not reliable. It's in the interest of the town and in particular constituents of the center that we move forward. So my recommendation is that you approve the award of the bid to the second lowest bidder, which is Tesco, in the amount of fifty-eight thousand, four hundred and eighty-nine dollars.
And just to clarify, even though it's not the, it's not the lowest bid, it is still within the grant amount?
It is. It's below the amount that we applied for. I think we had sixty? Sixty-one five that we applied for. We'll only get the actual cost, I believe.
Other questions or comments from the council? In that case, there's a motion in a second? All in favor?
Someone very excited.
Town Administrator, Approval of an Authorization to Sign a Three-Year Agreement with Church Community Housing Corporation for Community Development Block Grant Related Administrative Services. John?
Madam President, I believe we just skipped over item number A or letter A.
Oh.
Not to take it out of order, I don't know if we have to skip that one or not.
That's me, sorry.
What?
It's Janice's contract, but we're holding that, right?
Right, we're holding that because I messed up. So we need to submit a new fiscal impact analysis and that hopefully will be on December tenth.
Got it. So do we need a motion to continue this or just continue it?
Never hurts to take a motion.
All right, well, I'll make a motion to continue general business item A.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor? Now we'll go back to the Community Block Development Grant.
Okay, so this is a strange situation. We shouldn't have had to do it necessarily. But anyway, the Church Community Housing Corporation has for several years actually administered a Community Development Block Grant Program for us. And has done so at no direct compensation. Over the years, that has, that work has increased significantly in volume as well as complexity. So for some time, they have wanted to see if there was a way to actually get some compensation for that. When we apply for a grant and when we actually get a CDBG grant, there's always a percentage from that grant available for administrative services that we so far have not allocated to compensate Church Community Housing. But that's the proposal, basically. They're doing this for, I think, all towns in East Bay. They're the only ones doing it. But notwithstanding that, the state insisted that an RFP be issued so that we can technically deal with all the competitive bidding. So we did that and lo and behold, they were the only respondent. So my recommendation is that you approve this agreement and allow me to sign it. I gave you some of the numbers that are involved in terms of monies that can be involved with grant administration. The bottom line is that it's all within the percentage that is available and actually within the monies that currently are still set aside from previously received grants. So there is no net fiscal impact from this.
Madam President. I'd like to make a motion to approve the three-year contract and direct the administrator to sign said contract with the Church Community Housing Corporation.
Second.
Any other comments or questions? In that case, all in favor? Town Clerk and the Administrator, The Lean Program Discussion and Approval of Proposal to Streamline Licensing Process and Pursue Online Licensing.
I guess I'll start. We recently participated in a training through Exedia, which was to, we actually are one of the last communities to get on this, is to streamline our licensing program. So we went through everything we do for licensing compared to what other communities are doing. And basically, what we've come up with is we'd like to do a fillable application, which is used statewide for licensing, to assist in the businesses not needing to come in to the clerk's office and then go down to the building official. It's not the state viewpoint yet, but it's the step before getting to there. So we have gone over everything and the requirements for what the town, the council requires for licenses versus what the statutes require for the licenses. This idea of subject to meeting all legal requirements, we don't even know what that means. Neither did the state, so I think this little packet is self-explanatory. If you go through there, you'll see some of the ideas, this ordinance that we put into place tonight to have some of the renewals that are not public hearing. I mean, I have, you only got the backup to the ones that had the public hearing. There's a stack like this that you didn't get, that we didn't copy ten times for counsel because they're kind of ordinary, you're not going to stop a business because they don't have a holiday license anyway. And this is really going to ready us. But what I'm kind of excited about is that it'll also introduce getting credit card acceptance. And that'll help expedite some things through. A business should be able to apply in the comfort of their own business and not have to come in here. And we should be able to work out some things like that. It's going to get it to the departments that need it. It's going to get the information. So it should help expedite everything all around. All the clerks, with the exception of one in the clerk's office, sat in on the training with the town administrator. It was three or four sessions on it. And I was pretty impressed with what they were doing. And I'm more than willing to try to get this moving. I know the administrator's been anxious to get it going as well. So we're going to continue to keep implementing these steps unless there's any objection. But it's all in the process of what the clerk's office does for licensing.
Yes, John.
Do, we need a motion on something specific here? Because it sounds like this is just continuing the process that we've already been going down.
Well, it's, I'd like a motion to show that you want to proceed in this manner or if you have any pots that you don't want to proceed with.
So, well, I have one question. And that's, I mean, I think if we can go to a better process than all the paper we have now, that's great. But in terms of funding this, are there items here that are going to require funding that we don't have now set aside for this? Or are they, you know, things that we can take without additional, undertake without additional funding right now?
When we get to viewpoint, it's going to have a cost to it. We're not going to get to that point yet.
What's viewpoint?
That's like the building official is currently on, it's.
It's a program that was developed through a contract between the state and this company, Viewpoint. Basically, online applications for permitting, not only online applications, but the online processing. And one of the things it does is automatically, when an application comes in, it's considered complete. It gets forwarded to all the departments that need to review it and sign off on it simultaneously, instantly, with, you know, the ability to respond much more quickly than we currently often see. So it can speed up the process significantly. And at the same time, basically a better documentation of it, which is sometimes a problem as well. That does come with a cost that we actually don't directly control because the contract was negotiated by the state. But I will say that at least for building and zoning, I think the majority of municipalities are participating in that. We're still looking at what the participation rate is for the licensing and how much experience and track record there is to take account of. It's not an insignificant cost for the building and zoning. For example, for this past year, I believe it was in the nine thousand dollar range. It's by transaction, actually, that you get a certain charge from this company. Ultimately, we should get the savings. They're difficult to quantify, but it certainly will allow us to do at least the same and probably more with either the same or fewer people also. So we'll save ultimately in that regard.
Madam President, can I just ask a question? I just have an interest historically. I mean, I remember for the past 10 years, all you hear about is Rhode Island is extremely expensive to get regulations. I mean, that's one of the things you constantly hear. It's cumbersome for businesses, so they don't even come to Rhode Island. So who started this state-funded consultant? Like, what was the state group that started this process? It sounds like they're going to towns.
Basically, it came from, I think, the then administration in the governor's office. And then Rhode Island Commerce has been very engaged in this, as well as the Department of Business Relations. And they really have spearheaded it. They've also worked closely with, you know, some of the municipal organizations to...
But it's going to end up costing each city and town in the state to participate in this, or to...
Yes.
When we get to that point. Right now, we're at step one. But it is the preview to get to viewpoint eventually, when it gets more clerk's offices involved and things like that. But I do have to say also on this, if you go to that gap analysis, one part of this is a business registration. Right now, we charge them for a trade name. Essentially, that would be a business registration instead. That's going to need an ordinance change for that part. But we will, you know, proceed with the solicitor and try to draft out an ordinance. It's not going to cost the business anymore in the town. But as opposed to coming in and registering what we call a trade name registration, which is the same cost, it'll be a business registration. It'll give us more information to share with the police department, the fire department, the building department. It'll, it'll keep all the departments kind of in a loop with the information.
Madam President?
It's going to take a little bit to implement even this. We have to put...
But the end goal will be to increase revenues in Rhode Island, because more businesses will come to Rhode Island, correct?
What's actually to, believe it or not, assist the businesses?
Yeah.
Is to assist businesses, make it easier to go through the process and hopefully save time.
Correct, which will benefit Rhode Island.
And indirectly, that should benefit through additional revenue.
Counselor Edwards?
Yeah, in keeping with Roberts' rules and the thought that we're supposed to have a motion on the floor before discussion, I'd like to make a motion to approve the items discussed by the clerk and administrator and instruct them to continue on down this path to a leaner government.
Madam President, can I ask one quick question that was brought up?
We definitely can have a discussion here. So there's a motion and a second now, discussion. Go right ahead.
I just would like clarification. Does Roberts' rules require a motion before a town council can have a discussion among themselves about things that come up?
Technically, yes. Technically, under Roberts' rules, you need a main motion on any item of business. You need a main motion to consider that item of business. So as you proceed through the agenda, there would be a motion to approve or not approve.
So if somebody doesn't make a motion, the town council couldn't discuss something?
Technically, under the strictest interpretation of Roberts' rules, yes. Most municipalities apply Roberts' rules with their historical practice, and most municipalities have evolved away from that strict interpretation. But under the printed version of Roberts' rules, yes, you do need a main motion.
Which Roberts' rules is it? Like, what section?
I can pull it up if you'd like, but I don't have it.
I'd like to find out at some point. It just seems bizarre to me that if there weren't a live motion, the town council couldn't discuss something. That seems bizarre to me.
Madam President, I would assume it would be like a walk-in quorum. If we're discussing amongst ourselves without a motion and a second, it's like a walk-in quorum. It could be influencing one another in a sense, no?
Well, we're getting, speaking of Roberts' rules, we're getting a little bit off topic here. So I'm sure that Attorney Faibish would be happy to answer more Roberts' rules questions in a little bit.
No, that's not right.
But I do have one question for, ultimately, when this lean process, if you do go to viewpoint, and I don't know if viewpoint has this now, but would the business owner be able to look at their application online and see where they are in the process? So in other words, the business owner could go online and know which paperwork they might be missing, or which things they might be missing, or where they are in the approval process? They'll be able to see that too, not just us. Oh, that's excellent. Thank you. Okay, any other...
And the one other thing is they don't necessarily have to come here to apply.
Right, they could do it online, right?
And then follow, and then follow their application online. In that case, there's a motion and a second, I believe. Any other questions or comments?
Okay.
All in favor?
Okay. Town Administrator, approval to enter into agreements for the procurement of energy, gas and/or electric supplies to replace the current contract with direct energy, which is expiring in December. Jan?
Thank you. This one is a little bit more complicated, and I can only hope that you've been able and willing to read my somewhat lengthy agenda request. It has to do with how the town procures energy, in particular electricity, but there's also a chance to expand that to gas. It started some time ago when the Rhode Island League of Cities and Towns organized an initiative to do two things. One is to promote the use of renewable energy, and two is to get competitive prices for their members. At that time, the town was a member, and we participated. And through that initiative, we entered into a contract with direct energy, which accomplished those two goals that we, that I just mentioned. That contract is actually expiring. It has expired, but it's continuing on a month-to-month basis. In the meantime, the league decided to go out with an RFP again to see what else was available in the market. They selected a different entity called Power Options. And Power Options works, which they would actually be sort of the broker. And then they are affiliated with an entity called Constellation Energy, which is the supplier. So there is a new agreement in place and an arrangement in place that the league has arranged for its members. We probably would have followed that if we had remained members of the league, but we didn't. We did, or the council decided and the budget committee decided not to fund the membership dues. So since then, I've been going back and forth and trying to figure out what our options are. And there certainly are options. There are lots of entities that want to do this kind of procurement for you. And they typically get paid not by the municipalities in our case, but rather by the suppliers that win the contracts. And so for the municipalities, technically speaking, it's a revenue-neutral or budget-neutral proposition. Although you have had discussions in the past whether there isn't some value associated with this anyway, and therefore you should go out with an RFP or not. We wouldn't technically have to go out to enter into an agreement with an entity like that, which in this case, I would recommend is Best Practice Energy. I've given you some background information on that firm. They can do this procurement both for electricity and gas. They follow the market on a regular basis. They basically let you commit or, I forget what that's called, but, you know, they follow it and get the best competitive price that they can get over a certain period of time. They have been doing this with at least some of the municipalities in Rhode Island that are not participating in the league's initiative. They include Cumberland, Pawtucket. I think Westerly went out with a separate RFP, and the league turned out to be the low bidder. So it's, you know, the league was the low bidder in that regard. But Middletown, Pawtucket, and Cumberland are working with us at a company and successfully so. I'm conflicted about this, because I'll be very honest, that from my perspective, working with the league has all kinds of benefits for the town. And I personally don't believe that there's really any reason, including in particular ideological reasons, to not want to work through the league. They offer all kinds of assistance. They offer all kinds of expert expertise and assistance on various topics, from taxes to how you deal with many, many issues, lots of white papers. They represent us in the legislature, where they represent sort of the majority priorities of the cities and towns, and they do it extremely effectively. It's not the kind of thing that we have the person power to do. So I see those benefits that we currently are at risk of losing. They have been kind enough to keep me on the email distribution list, but it's not going to last forever. So I see the benefit of that. If the council doesn't want to renew their membership in this fiscal year, because it's not in the budget, then my recommendation would be to go with the other alternative, which is Best Practice Energy, and allow me to enter into an agreement, which can be as short as one year, which is a little bit different from the other option with the league. That's typically three years, although the town can lock in for shorter periods on particular prices as well. I've done the best due diligence that I can do. It's not an area in which you have exact science, where you can get, you know, two-to-dollar estimates of the kinds of savings you're going to get. In either case, I believe there are significant savings available, but I'm not able to give you a very precise number or even a ballpark number, other than we would be, at the very least, as well off as we were with the direct energy contract. I will say that since we had the choice to go with energy, direct energy, many more entities have come, have entered the market. And so that's why the league went through the process of vetting various candidates for this. I'll leave it at that. If there are any questions, I can try to answer them. One other thing that I mentioned in my request as a matter of background, this other entity, Best Practice Energy, which also created a separate entity named Collaborative Energy Options. They tried to operate under the statute that Rhode Island adopted that allowed for what's called inter-local agreements for this type of service. And as part of that, providing that authorization, the General Assembly required a vetting by the Office of the Attorney General. And these people have been through that vetting process and being found qualified to provide these services, which is not the same as the Attorney General saying you should go with this company. It's just they meet the qualifications to do what they propose to do.
Madam President?
Yes, Jan?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the administrator to enter into an agreement for the procurement of energy, gas and/or electric supplies, which would replace the current contract with direct energy for option number one, Power Options and Constellation New Energy pursuant to their agreement with the Rhode Island League of Cities and Towns.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Discussion. I have a question. In terms of the savings, and I know that you can't even really give us a ballpark, but we're talking about tens of thousands of dollars in electricity savings. We're not talking about saving $1,000. Like, are we, I mean, is the general savings from these things, you know, $20,000 or $50,000? Or, I mean, is there a...
I think it's between $20,000 and $50,000 per year.
Okay. So the savings would be for being in one of these agreements is pretty substantial.
Madam President?
Yes, Jan?
I'm just curious as to what notes being passed back and forth over there.
I'm sorry, he just passed me the Roberts' Rules section.
Oh, okay.
Don't believe it.
Secret messages.
We have to share with the whole class now.
No, yeah, no note passing in class.
Did you have a question about this, or no, just the note?
No, just I saw papers going back and forth.
All right. Any other comments or thoughts on this? Anybody?
I just have one. It's saying here that Cumberland, Pawtucket, and Middletown are using the Best Practice Energy, Collaborative Energy Options, as opposed to what the Rhode Island League of Cities and Towns is offering? Or is it the same?
No, that's not the same. That's the alternative.
And...
I would say that the majority of municipalities is going with, or at least a much larger number is going with, the league's contract.
Now Cumberland, Pawtucket, and Middletown, their feedback is positive?
Yes.
It's almost, is it the same, better? What is their feedback there?
I can't quite tell you. All that is, that they decided to do it for reasons, not all of those reasons I know. I don't know that they had anything against the league. I don't know. I think they're still members of the league. So you never know. It's my experience that people at the local level always have their own ideas as to, you know, what they prefer or don't prefer. And that's probably the case in these issues too. I spoke with the former mayor of Cumberland, who was very, very enthusiastic about it. Spoke with the town manager in Middletown. He's fine with it. There were some hiccups here and there, but nothing directly related to, you know, the cost of energy. And Pawtucket, I haven't spoken to the mayor, but my impression from what I've read about that, that they had a positive experience as well. And the mayor is a very prominent member of the League of Cities and Towns, so.
Huh.
That's why it's not an easy decision. I felt I had to do the due diligence and at least present an alternative in case you wouldn't want to go back to the League of Cities and Towns, which requires, you know, an appropriation or at least a transfer within the budget to pay for that.
Yeah. Anyone else? In that case, there's a...
Move the question.
There's a motion and a second for the town administrator to enter in an agreement with Power Options and Constellation New Energy pursuant to their agreement with the Rhode Island League of Cities and Towns.
And just...
Did you, Jan, did you have something else you wanted to say?
No. What I notice is that that motion does not include rejoining the league as members, which basically is the prerequisite for being able to participate. That was, I think I explained that, that because we're not members, we could not necessarily participate in this new agreement that they, this new arrangement that they...
So we would be looking at, am I within, so we are looking at joining Cumberland, Pawtucket, and Middletown?
No.
No?
Well, what I hear the motion is to go with the Power Options, which is the League of Cities and Towns alternative, which is the first, or whatever, depending on how you look, is the first or the second option. It's the first option in the agenda request. Power Options and Constellation New Energy, they have an agreement with the Rhode Island League of Cities and Towns. I think the motion is for us to proceed under, pursuant to that agreement.
Or it says "or" in the alternative.
Right. The motion does not say that you want to do the alternative. That could be another motion, I suppose, but...
So we would have to spend almost $7,000 to join, are you saying join League of Cities and Towns?
And I may be able to get a reduction in that, given that half of the year has almost passed by, although you can argue that sort of both ways, but...
Well, one of the, one of the reasons that we explained about the Rhode Island Cities and Towns is that you're paying for someone to go and lobby for you when you have representatives and senators that are supposed to be lobbying for you. That was, like, that's their job. And yet, we're going to pay someone to do something that we have senators and representatives that are elected to do. That's, that was the reason behind not joining Rhode Island Cities and Leagues and spending this money when we have representatives that are elected to do and represent us. So are they, they're not representing us, apparently?
Madam President, are we straying from the question here?
No, no, no.
Legitimate question.
Um, all right. I, all right. I have my own feelings on that. Thank you.
Jan?
Just about that, I do agree that we have representatives and senators who are in the legislature in part to, you know, represent the towns, the municipalities.
Something, representing something, not sure.
Well, I would suggest that we stay away from characterizations that are... Well, I would suggest that we stay away from characterizations that are basically irrelevant. If you want to just talk about what you think about our representatives and senators, that's a different topic, I believe. They're there to do their job. Different people have different ideas as to how they do that perhaps, but it's not as if they can do all the lobbying that, for example, entities like the Cities of Towns does, because they gather a lot of expertise, they put very solid information together, and they are very credible in the legislature and have often provided significant assistance to cities and towns. Sometimes there are issues that are difficult for them to act on because not all cities and towns agree all the time, so they have to tread very carefully when that happens. And we certainly have had instances of that. The question here is, I believe, whether, on balance, the League of Cities and Towns provides assistance to cities and towns that is helpful to them, if not sometimes critically important to them. And I will also weigh in on that as a town administrator. It makes my job a whole lot easier to have the League of Cities and Towns do what they do and do all that extra work, for which we have no people to do it here. I don't think it's a matter of we're doing it only because our legislators that are not doing their work. I think that's not an accurate presentation.
Madam President?
Yes, John?
Just because a question came up by the administrator, Mr. Solicitor. Do I need to amend my motion to include rejoining the League of Cities and Towns, or is it implied in what my motion has?
It's arguably implied, but I think the administrator made clear that he's looking for explicit authority at this point.
Well, then, in that case, I'll amend my motion to include rejoining the League of Cities and Towns and ask the administrator to do his best to get us a discount on it.
Do I...
Need a second?
Yeah.
I'll second that.
amend the motion.
I have a question. So during the budget session, I'm sure this subject came up because it always has, and what was the reason that it wasn't funded, to your understanding?
Why the League wasn't funded?
Yeah.
Well, among...
I'm sure you asked for it.
I think at the discussion that happened then, there were comments made similar to what Councilwoman Cook made tonight.
Uh huh.
So...
And it wasn't...
They were just repeated. And I think that carried the day at that time.
I just didn't have it in the...
I'm not denying that. The question is whether it should be reconsidered or not, and I try to be respectful of that, and if only by providing an alternative just in case.
I'd also like to just point out, to the best of my knowledge, in addition to this, the League also offers, not that we participate in all of them, but there are other bulk purchasing programs that, not all the time, but the League occasionally offers other sort of group purchasing programs that you can participate in that have savings and various things.
If I may, one example that we just talked about tonight, the viewpoint program. It comes with a cost. The contract was negotiated by the state. The League of Cities and Towns could be very helpful to those members who participate in the program, say to the state, you really need to do something to bring the cost down of this program. And they can do that on behalf of a lot of the municipalities, instead of each of us having to go individually and try to make the case that it's actually pretty steep for smaller municipalities in particular. So that's just one example of what the League can and does do very well.
Madam President?
Mr. Fabisch?
Can I also just add, and again, you know, the determination about the League is, of course, a council prerogative, but I know that with respect to litigation, there are litigation opportunities that are available to members of the League that this town has been excluded from, perpetual contracts, some litigation related to opioid issues. There are a number of issues that the League has felt the need to seek recourse from the courts, and the town has not been able to participate in that, not been able to influence that, not been able to have a voice in that process. So that's just another factor for the council to consider relative to this.
Madam President, can I ask a question of the Solicitor?
Yes, go ahead.
I'm curious. So we've had a budget season, and the voters voted on a budget, and none of the budgets funded this. Why does the town council get to override what the voters voted for?
So I looked, actually, at that process and that charter provision carefully when this appeared on the agenda. It is, from a resource allocation standpoint, just like an interdepartmental transfer, which the council generally can undertake as a part of its operating process. There was not a specific resolution that said we are getting out of the League of Cities and Towns. If there was something like that that had been put forth before the voters, I would have a different perspective.
That sounds weird. If the voters were given the option, do we fund it or not, and they didn't fund it, why is that not saying we're getting out of it?
Because when the voters approve a budget, they approve a budget that includes all sorts of different things, right? It includes payment for all the employees in Town Hall. There are employees who, there are vacant positions in Town Hall, right? So the administrator, sometimes with the council's authority or approval, can transfer line items. Ultimately, it's the tax rate and the total budget that's what gets passed by...
But it's passed by line items. It's line items.
It is passed by line items, but as the council, as the chief operating authority of the town, you, in conjunction with the administrator, have the authority to move line items during the interim period.
But it had zero, so zero is zero. I would probably say the best thing to do is to make the case for the next budget.
And again, I'm not opining on the wisdom of joining the League or not, just the legality of whether the council has the legal authority to fund that line item.
And then my other question is just the actual motion. It says, the motion seems to read, to fund the power options "or in the alternative" with Best Practice Energy.
Madam President, I did not say "or in the alternative" at the end of my motion. I just want to make sure that that's clear.
That's not the motion.
No, that's the agenda item.
Hang on, John. That's just the agenda item.
Okay.
May I add one more thing?
Go ahead, John.
I don't think anyone is disagreeing that a decision was made by the town council and the Budget Committee not to fund the membership for this current year. I don't think it's the preferred option to just say, never mind, we're going to do it anyway again. There's a reason for it, an unexpected reason, which is that we need to enter into a new agreement for competitive energy procurement at an advantageous rate. And it so happens that we now have two options in front of us that I thought deserved your considered evaluation, as to which is the best for the town at this point in time. That's your decision, not mine, but I think that's the reason. It's not as if it's a total disregard for what was decided during the budget process. Nobody should take that very lightly, and I certainly didn't take it lightly in this case.
Any other comments and questions? There's a motion and a second, all in favor? Opposed? Planning Board Chair Susan Gill. Distribution of Planning Board Recommendation for Solar Ordinance and Subdivision Regulations requests joint Planning Board Council workshop. Hello, Susan.
Madam President, that agenda request says subdivision, planning, but solar and subdivision regulations. We put that in as a space holder till we got the backup. The backup is actually comp plan, proposed solar amendments for the comp plan. That subdivision regulations will be coming at another meeting. So it's only for distribution, anyway.
But and to request that, but you are requesting a joint hearing.
I think that'd be helpful. If you look at the, it's a pretty dense document, and so everybody, there's three parts. There's the, it was recommended due to the taxation ordinance at the same time, and then we realized that our comp plan really does not have much at all to address that, so we wanted to do the comp plan amendments at this time. These are all going to require public hearings, anyway. And then the solar ordinance, through the process of reviewing three ordinances and all the items that are mentioned in the memo, we spent a lot of time on it, a lot of effort to try and get it more workable for the town and the developers. So I think, you know, it would be in your best interest for us to be able to go through it. Chris Kearns was very helpful to us, the Office of Energy Resources. It seems to be a very fast-moving industry, and, you know, in six months, a lot of these things may already be out of date. I don't know, but it's, there's a lot of information to digest. I think in order to prepare the council for the public hearing, if we walk you through it, it would be very helpful.
It is a little complicated. So what is the planning board's, I mean, what is, when would you like to have this? December, soon as possible?
Yeah, I mean, I was hoping to get to you a little sooner. I apologize that it's on top of the budget season. It is what it is. So, I mean, I think, you know, we'd work with you guys, whatever you think you can do to get it worked into your schedule, whether it's Saturdays work good, if you want to do it, you know, off evening.
So we have another scheduling thing to do in just a little bit, so maybe when we do that, we'll try and pick some dates that work, and then we can work with the planning board and see if any of those work for you.
Yeah, it'll be several hours, I mean, it'll be hours.
This doesn't look light.
It's not.
It's not easy to walk through. And there are some, definitely some things in there that, kind of, we came to consensus on, but they're going to need discussion. And I think the council, it would really help you to figure out what direction you want to go with a lot of these things before the public and developers start proposing their ideas, so you know, kind of, where you want to go with it, because there are definitely areas there that are up for discussion.
Okay.
Okay? So just let us know.
Thank you very much. We'll get you a date. The next item is scheduling of interviews for town legal services. So you should have gotten a packet with all the responses to our RFP, which are substantial. I think there are 11 who applied for the solicitor position, and then 10 of those also applied for the land use services as well. So we need to interview these folks. I had talked to Mr. Fabisch about the process.
About Thursday over dinner.
Yeah. I talked with Mr. Fabisch about the process. He's going to share a few words with us about what our options are in terms of making sure we're doing this the right way.
So primarily, as I understood it, Madam President, the question was about whether you could go into executive session to hold these interviews. The answer is yes. It's considered a personnel matter, so you can go into executive session to evaluate job performance and related personnel matters under 42-46-5A1. My understanding is then the council, where there's been some discussion about moving from that process to one where there's been public interviews for perhaps a narrower field of candidates.
So what is the council's pleasure or thought? Does anyone, my thought a little bit was, you know, to be fair to everybody, was to potentially do two nights, because there's a lot of them, to divide them up, two nights, do the first round of interviews in executive session, maybe a half an hour or so for each candidate, and then at the end of that process, determine, you know, let the council determine which candidates they'd like to bring back for a second set of interviews, and then potentially have those second interviews in public. That just seems to be, with this many applicants, maybe an efficient way to do it, but that's just one idea. So what does everybody think?
Madam President?
Yes, John?
I'd just say, I'd like to say, I think that that's a great idea, and we should do it that way.
I think it should be done in the open.
I do, too.
Anybody else?
What's the problem in having questions in the open, and then we have a discussion among, why does it have to be in executive session?
It doesn't have to be. It says May.
Madam President?
Yes?
It's an option available to the council. It's not required or mandatory under state law, and in fact, this provision of state law does require that you give an applicant the opportunity to have it held in public.
Yeah.
But it is available to the council. I do know, only because Madam Clark just told me, that a number of the applicants have requested confidentiality relative to their application.
Okay. So having done that, how does that relate to a first round of interviews, then?
Again, there's no requirement that we honor that request. My advice or suggestion would be that if the council decides to hold the entire process publicly, that you reach out to them and offer them the opportunity to withdraw that application, but that's, you know, that's, again, a policy question for the board.
My only thought on that is that my experience is that, at least for a first interview, that you have a better interview when you do it in executive session, because people are more willing to, I think, sometimes talk freely, particularly if they're, they, we might ask a question about a certain experience they have had or what they would do about something, and if they're a municipal solicitor, for example, in public, they may be able to tell us some. In executive session, under confidentiality, sometimes they're more free about explaining a similar situation with another municipality that they have worked with or might actually be working with now, that they wouldn't necessarily be able to discuss as much in public. I just find that people are a little bit more open in the interview, in the first interview, although I certainly don't have any objection to when we winnow this down to a lesser group of having those interviews in public, but that's just my opinion. So I need some consensus folks here, some direction.
Would we be required to have them in executive session if they requested it, or no?
No, if they asked to be in public session, they would have to be in public session, although given that Nancy's telling us a bunch of them have asked that they're...
I didn't say a bunch.
Well, some, at least some have asked that they're...
Could you do that? Could you do some in executive and some in the public, or no?
You would have to ask them, yeah. I mean, you could do that. And the ones that said, oh, no, I'd rather be in public, we would do in public.
Right. I mean, as a council, we could do that, have them in executive session, and the ones that want to do it publicly, do it publicly. It's just that there's like seven or eight of them.
There's 11.
Eleven.
11, okay. So it's going to be a long night.
Well, we have to do...
It's been a long, three nights.
We can't. I think it's too many people to see in one night.
Do we plan to bring in all 11, or can some be eliminated before interview?
You know, that's an interesting question. I, I'll be honest, you know, there's a couple of names in there that I initially am not super comfortable with. On the other hand, I don't know that, without getting into a rolling quorum problem, nor, to be fair to the taxpayers, that we shouldn't let everybody come in and interview, because I don't know how we, I don't know how we would find a way to winnow through those. I think you just have to let everybody interview.
Well, I respectfully don't agree.
Okay.
Because to go through 11 applicants, and maybe more by the time we get to this, is going to take an awful lot of time. I don't see why that we can't screen some of these people on paper. I mean, that's pretty normal with any kind of a job hiring process. And I think in the interest of expediency and efficiency that we should try and whittle this down a little bit before we go into interviews.
Well, we could have a meeting to do that. It would require another meeting, that's all, from us to do that, but we could.
I think that would be appropriate.
Okay. Well, in that case, so the first step, then...
Let me just mention that you may not want to do this, but at one time, all the council ranked, numbered, went through their, their resumes from the solicitors or administrators, kind of ranked them in a number one to 11, how you felt the strongest to the weakest, and then you interviewed, I don't know how many you selected, say you selected six, the top six that everybody agreed on were the ones that you interviewed. And then if you didn't like them, we went on further. Might have been before you. I'm just saying it's a system.
We would each do it individually, so it wasn't a rolling quorum, and we would just submit our...
Individually, submitted them to me, I put it out, and then you'll find that some of you are going to see...
that some of you are going to see strength, when you go through all the resumes, you're going to see some with good strengths up there, so a lot of it's going to be common. I'm just offering it out, I'm not suggesting they have to do it.
Mr. Fabish, you ready to say something?
I'm not sure that I necessarily understand the, the process that's being suggested, but it, it does trigger concerns, that does trigger concerns of rolling quorum, in my mind.
We'd all be submitting them directly to Nancy, and she would aggregate.
They just sent it to Nancy.
But it's, by, by relying on her aggregation, you're making a joint public policy decision, even though you're making it individually, the, the final action is joint.
So, it's like a vote? It's like a electronic vote?
Correct.
Which is not in any policy?
Correct.
Is that, I got a que...
I would also say about that, you know, my experience in hiring people, and, you know, in my corporate career, I did that a lot, there were people, when I looked at resumes and thought, "These are my top candidates," and then there were a few others that I had, maybe the resume didn't, you know, sparkle quite as much, but when they came into interview and I got a chance to talk to them, it's not about hiring somebody who writes a great resume. And so, I personally am really uncomfortable looking at these. I might be able to pull one or two out and go, "This person just doesn't have any experience we want," but I'd really like to have, I mean, they took the time to submit this to us. If it means having a meeting amongst ourselves and talking about their resumes, then I'd be comfortable doing that, but the, I couldn't rank these people without, in some sort of numerical order that I really believed in, just looking at the paper.
Well, that's a good point. You should have some criteria by which we would screen them, and I'm sure we must have some things that we can say upfront, we have to have this, and if out of those 11 or so applicants, you know, if they don't meet those criteria, then we eliminate them. And, you know, it has to be that way sometimes. It's not just, you know, they have to have the requirements first, and then the interview skills somewhat second.
All right. So, let's, how about we start with the meeting, how about we start with a short meeting to go through all the applications together as a group in executive session, figure out which ones we like, that, that we want to bring in to interview? Does that...
Why does it have to be in executive?
Well, because we're going to be discussing people's characters, potentially their reputations, potentially what we know, what some of us might know about some of them, or experience with them. I think we have to do that in executive session. Personnel board does that. Yeah, and that is how the personnel board operates, too. I, I, I don't think that we, I, I would certainly not feel comfortable, I mean, some of these attorneys I know and I've worked with, and I certainly would not, in public session, feel comfortable saying something that I might be willing to say in executive session. I don't think that that's a productive way to, to do this.
Madam President, if I could also add, we're not just interviewing 11 different firms, because we split up the job of solicitor and the land use piece, we could, in theory, be interviewing essentially 22 different firms, because we could have a combination. We could have one firm that becomes our solicitor, and we could have another firm that becomes our land use. So, I mean, there's, there's, for us to go through, I think we need to at least meet and talk about these.
Okay.
If not, just out of, out of the gates, interview all of them.
All right. So, I think that's a pretty fair compromise, so that we're not going to, we're not going to necessarily interview everybody all up front, but we're going to sit and discuss which applicants in here we think we want to see, and who knows, we might want to see all 11 of them, but maybe there are some clearly where, you know, the, the requirements aren't, aren't there, and...
And maybe we interview one for land use only, even though they applied for both, you never know.
You never know. So, is there a date for that, and then a date for the solar?
Madam President, relative to the date, I would just remind whoever it is that's responsible for scheduling it, that under this exception, the notice does need to go out to each of those applicants.
Yes.
Can I ask a question of the solicitor? Is there, is there an inverse problem in not having it open, how we're discussing their application?
Okay. So...
Are we setting the date?
We're working on dates here.
Counselor Perry suggested Thursday.
Dinner, get over it.
[laughing].
Have dinner.
We don't need to give notice for unmee, we need to give notice for their interviews.
To discuss them in executive...
What the law says is any discussion of the job performance, character, or physical or mental health, so the discussion alone triggers the notice requirement.
So...
And the notice requirement is...
Neil's fine, so long as they receive it.
How soon do you want to do this?
I mean, I think soon.
Yeah.
December...
Twenty-fifth?
December 2nd, 4th, 5th?
Not the 2nd show. It's already been vetoed.
Oh, yeah, that's right, that's right, okay. Can't do the 3rd.
We have the landfill workshop on the...
Can't do the 3rd, right.
So...
Fourth and 5th, so Wednesday, Thursday?
How about Thurs, what about Thursday, the 5th? Okay, let's try another day. Would you be here on Wednesday, the 4th?
We've got a meeting on the 3rd at the high school.
I said that, I know.
Right.
We also have negotiations with one of our unions on the 4th.
Okay, so...
But it's during the day, I mean, I gotta burn PTO and spend my whole day here.
So, Wednesday night just doesn't work?
If you want to do it Wednesday night, we could, I guess.
I can do Wednesday.
What day?
I can do Wednesday, the 4th, December 4th.
Wednesday, the 4th. It doesn't have to be...
It's good for you, Steve.
Yes.
It's good for three of us.
We also have a meeting on the 9th.
Yep.
We could do it at an executive session on the 9th.
But then we're, by the time we do it...
Yeah.
We won't have to spend hours doing this. I don't think this will be a real...
Okay.
This is the review of the 11 stage, and...
Yeah.
These are nine interviews.
Would it be possible to meet earlier on, on the 4th, say 6 instead of 7?
If people can make it.
Well, that's what I'm saying, is it possible for...
You tell me, my preference is 7.
Just trying to get, in case we...
Just because the baby goes to bed, so it's easier.
It is, actually.
It is, so I mean...
But that's all right, we can meet.
That's the kind of jam that happens.
It can be done.
The problem, the only problem with pushing this too far is that we have this first meeting, then we're going to have to have interviews, and I, my guess is we'll have two nights of interviews, and we need to get on the solar ordinance, and as we push this, it gets, the closer it gets to Christmas, the harder it gets to do all of this. So...
I know, my, my dear Thursday.
We can try and make it a short meeting on, we can try and make it a short meeting on the 4th, we could meet, if we do an executive session, we can meet at the, maybe the library of the senior center or someplace else, if this room is not available.
And we've done, we've done a lawyer, or attorney interviews before at the senior, at the senior center, so...
At the senior center.
We did, we did the town administrators, they're also...
Okay, so the 4th?
Yeah.
All right, on to the solar ordinance.
Okay, wait a minute.
We confirm that?
Is this just a special meeting?
It is a special...
For executive session?
For executive session, for us to go through the packet and have a discussion amongst ourselves as to which candidates...
Just to review applicants.
To review the applications, and determine which applicants we'd like to bring forward to interview.
Just to review applicants.
I mean, it's great that we have an abundance of witnesses here, I mean, it's, you know, I don't ever remember a time when we got 11 applications, that's a lot.
For anything.
For anything.
That's because they were winnowed out.
It's because we're making them.
Madam President, just, just one more point on that.
I think there's a lot of work here.
As, I think everybody understands, it needs to be a publicly noticed meeting. You do also have to state beforehand that everybody has been notified, there's a special requirement, so that needs to be put on the record before you go into the executive session, that everybody's been notified of their opportunity to have the, the discussion held in public.
So, I'm going to send an, you know, it was by email, I won't be able to get it out by mail by then, just informing them that the council will be reviewing their application in executive session.
But they still have a right to have the review in public, it sounds like.
And that they have the right to request it in public.
I can get you language tomorrow.
Okay, that's great. I won't be here.
Genie, you're up.
They'll have to answer, you know, if they want it in, if they want their application reviewed in public, they'll have to tell me that. Yes, they do, they'll have to tell me that. And if I receive no response, it doesn't matter, as long as I give a memo.
All right, so let's talk about the solar ordinance.
So, is the 4th...
Yeah, hold on, one second, back it up. I just want to make clear on one thing. You talked about having the first interviews in executive session, and the second interviews in our open meeting.
Yeah.
Was that the decision, to do it that way, or did we, I'm not sure we closed that loop?
I, I mean, I think it, I think it is, that I, that's, I think that that's the plan so far, is that if we have the first interviews in executive session, and then the second interviews in, in, in public.
I'm a little concerned about doing it in executive session, because this has been a hot button in the past, you know, interviewing of solicitors and, and who we decide upon, so I'm thinking in the interest of, you know, clarity, and maybe they both should be public.
We did it publicly before, okay?
Well, let's do this. Let's get through the first meeting and figure out how many we have. How, how about that? Let's take this one step at a time. We'll get through the first meeting and figure out how many candidates we're bringing back, and then we'll, and, and then we'll have that discussion, then, and if we have a consensus, we have a consensus. If we don't, then we'll take a vote, and we'll figure it out. Okay, so, does that work for everybody for now?
I still think it should all be in public.
Okay.
Solar ordinance.
Solar ordinance. How about, Sue said the planning board would be willing to do a Saturday if somebody, if we want to do a Saturday morning. I know nobody loves it, but I'm just saying it's there.
The planning board's bringing coffee and donuts, but we'll talk.
Otherwise, I need some other dates.
If you got to do, I mean, listen, the job requires we get this thing done, so if you got to do a Saturday, I will make arrangements.
Help me out here.
What Saturday are we talking about? Where are we now?
The 7th, you have town hall tree lighting.
What time is that?
2 o'clock, well, we're going to be setting up around 2:30 in the afternoon, it starts at 4:30. 4 o'clock.
What's the 7th?
Yeah, it's not a good time.
Okay.
Oh, correct.
How soon do you want to do this? Do you want to do it right away? Or can you do it on the 14th?
We could do it on the 14th, maybe? That works, too.
That's a Saturday.
Rosemary's making a face.
That's a Saturday, not, not the 14th, okay.
Susan, Rosemary?
I'd just like to, yeah, whatever, I think a couple of days, I'd really like for her to...
About Thursday.
Okay, so, what, they'd like a couple of days, so the 14th could be one of, the 14th could be one of them. How about, how about two other days? Anybody can come up with anything?
The 10th?
The 10th?
10th is a Tuesday.
The 30th is a Sunday.
The 11th, the 12th?
What do I get going on the 10th?
Well, yeah, but the 30th...
Oh, the 30th is a Saturday, yeah.
The 30th is the middle of the holiday week, and a lot of people are away or have family...
Nancy don't care, she's not going to be here.
I'm not going to be there either, but...
Well, she's only not going to be the 14th.
Well, how about the 10th, Tuesday night, the night after our council meeting, or the 11th, or the 12th, just...
So, why don't, okay, so why don't we do the, the 10th, the 11th, the 12th, or the 14th, and see what the planning board comes back to us with one of those?
I will not be present on the 11th.
Okay, not the 11th.
So, not the 11th, okay. 10th, 12th, 13th, 14th, oh, 10th, 12th, 14th, okay. Sounds good.
Okay.
So, on the 4th, we are having a meeting...
A meeting about the...
An executive session.
Yes.
To go over applications.
We're going to go through this on board.
Okay.
And we're going to figure out if we're...
7:00 PM, correct?
7:00 PM.
Where?
Figure out if we're going to hit...
She's either going to be here or senior center?
That'll be up, that, yes, that'll be up to the clerk, depending on the availability of rooms. Okay, so, we have that done, which brings us towards the end of our agenda here, as